We wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Thursday, October 14th, 2021. I'm gonna have you folks introduce yourself, starting with Jennifer.
Or not, finally.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Jennifer Martel. Gwen English.
Pete Cameron.
Aaron Brown.
Molly Cowan Select Board.
Nancy Belanger Alternate.
Great, and I'm gonna say that everybody's voting tonight. All present, so we're all voting members tonight. Kristin, do you want to introduce yourself too?
Sure. Kristin Murphy, Natural Resource Planner, and I'm sitting in for Dave Sharple's tonight.
Great. So, before we get going, there was a request by Exeter Rose Farm LLC Planning Board Case Number 17-27 for a request for extension of approval. On our agenda, it shows as other business, they have asked to go first. Does anybody on the board object to that?
No.
No.
Any members of the public object to that? Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and handle that order of business first this evening. Anybody in the public or anybody with the applicant wanted to speak? It just looked like they...
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be... We're happy to answer any questions. I'll try to be brief. As you know, this application was approved in early 2019. It was then subsequently appealed up to the Supreme Court. That appeal was only resolved by denial by the Supreme Court approving the Planning Board's decision on October 26th of last year. Thirty-day period after that for reconsideration. Actually, I'm sorry, I think that's a 10-day period, but in any event, had to wait some time since then we filed AOT, recently filed wetlands, have done some initial site work, but primarily due to the delay and given the state of the world and COVID and general construction delays, we're moving forward and have been actively submitting items to Dave Sharple's, but we're requesting an additional year to extend the approval. Just wasn't enough time.
Yep. Thank you. Any members of the board have a question for the applicant? Well, he's at the podium. No? Kristin, do you want to add anything on this?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Well, I guess I could say, so the applicant was at the Conservation Commission meeting this past Tuesday. They tabled the application for... To the next meeting, they were interested in evaluating some of the Planning Board discussion about the alternative routes. And then I think the AOT permit is still pending as well.
That's correct. That was filed in February, but I guess the wildlife review has been ongoing. It's very slow right now.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, yeah. So, but we're still working on it.
Yeah, the world that we live in right now, everything seems to take a bit longer. I know it's been the habit of this board, since I've been a part of it, to generally grant these pretty straightforward unless there's something that new that comes to light or a significant change in the property or the regulations that affect the application. I did have a brief discussion with Kristin today about that, and there really hasn't been anything significant that's changed in regulation that they're not already adhering to. There's just been streamlining, more than anything, on our local level. So I don't personally see any reason to deny this. I would certainly grant it myself, but anybody want to discuss it? Okay.
It seemed relatively straightforward.
Yes, sir.
As long as regulations hasn't changed, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
That's always one that worries me, but we've already discussed that, I'm fine.
Well, and I also think it's important that the applicant showed up sometimes on these extensions.
It is nice.
They just put in a piece of paper.
Yeah, it is nice.
And we thank you for coming.
Yeah, we do appreciate that, actually. Not that you haven't seen enough of this board, but it's been a while!
You guys as well.
We've been doing nothing.
So I entertain a motion.
May I ask a question before I try?
Absolutely.
Does it get the one-year, is it one-year from today's date or one-year from?
So if you look at the request on the...
Expires 10/26.
Yep, it would go to 10/26/2022, so that should be in the motion.
Okay.
If you're thinking of making a motion.
I am going to give it a try.
Wonderful.
I move that the request for extension of approval for Exeter Rose Farm LLC Planning Board Case Number 1727 be granted, I have to get the date in there, the extension be granted...
With a new expiration date.
With to October 26, 2022.
Yep.
Did I cover everything?
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
You want to second?
Yes, sir. We have a second from Pete. Okay. Any discussion? All right, I guess we'll do the roll call vote. You can just, I'll go down the line. Kristin? I'm sorry.
Nancy?
She's gonna vote against her own motion.
Molly?
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Passes. What do we have, three, four, six of us? Six to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you for moving us up as well.
Absolutely.
Now, wait another year?
No, they're gonna get this going, I know they are. They probably don't want to miss the market, I would assume. Okay, I guess that brings us to the approval of the minutes from September 23rd, 2021.
I have a couple of questions.
Alrighty.
The first one is because I haven't been buying shrubs for a long time, but aren't they sold in the gallon? By the gallon, shrubs? Little trees are different, and I'm looking over here to my right.
Which line are you looking at again?
Well, it's line, it's line 138. Where it says, "Mr. Sharple's noted shrubs are not by the gallon." I thought they were by the gallon, but I'm, it's been a while since I bought any.
No, I think what that's referring to is the shrubs on the plan were listed out as, so you can buy shrubs, if they're in a container, it's by the gallon. If they're bald and burlapped, which is basically when you get like the whole root ball and it's wrapped in fabric, then you buy it by the height of the shrub, and I think on that plan, they were listed by the height. And Dave just said, "They're not by the gallon," and I think, he asked if I had an issue with that, and I think I said no.
All right, well, no one else has any?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, yeah, I didn't have any, I read that through earlier and I didn't have any concerns with that.
Okay, then can we go to line 369? And there we had a question with respect to, this, my person to my right, lovely lady to my right, asked about the number of lights and the lack of landscaping. Well, now, the landscaping was addressed, but I can't find anything where that question about the lights was addressed. Does anybody have any recollection about that? Particularly the asker.
Yeah, I think that they didn't have, oh goodness, I can't remember if they had lights.
I don't think they had any.
Were there any in the parking area?
This is on Carlisle?
They don't have any. This is the...
Carlisle, right?
Yeah.
I don't think they had.
Oh, Carlisle or, oh, I guess it was.
It may well be that they are not, not in the answer.
That's my recollection.
I don't think they want it.
Okay. I'm zero, zero for two.
Let's see.
Let's see, how about 454?
This is sort of like memory test, Pete, what this is?
Yeah, boy. I'm not doing so well.
Don't they do this at 1 o'clock over Riverwoods? Want to just invite us next time?
454, "Mr. Sharple's noted yield plan amendments to the regulations are being brought forward." Isn't it amendments to the yield plan regulations? The amendments may well be to the yield plan, but they will be, they won't be, the amendments, well, again, I think you should take the words "yield plan" and move them from, from amendments to, between "the" and "regulations."
Yeah, I think that's right.
I think that makes sense.
All right, you got one.
I got another one, I got another one.
Good catch, good catch.
Oh, man, now he's getting wind.
This one is going to be all the way over on line 461. And I'm gonna let you guess.
Was this motion to adjourn?
No, I'm gonna let you guess what the error here is.
Vice Chair Plummer. He's not the vice chair.
Oh, Chair Plummer.
Either Chair Plummer or Vice Chair.
It's probably, usually I make the...
I think you made the motion, he normally doesn't make.
Usually gives me an elbow and I usually pipe.
So I'm two for two.
Yes.
Two for four.
So that should be changed to Brown.
Yes.
Oh, let's change it to Brown.
Now, can I go home?
No.
I had one really quick one on 395. I think it should, it's T12, T2, it's, the T should be a 1. 12 Kingston Road. You see it?
I don't see it.
295?
395.
395.
I may have misspoke, 395.
395?
Yep.
Chair Plummer reported, oh yeah, yep. It's funny how your mind will read it sometimes, though, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I would have just read it.
I've never been a good prover because of that. I just read it. It's like, no, it is not a 1.
That was all I had.
Anything from down here?
No.
You all are eagle eyes, it's very impressive.
Yeah. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
So moved, we have a motion, a second?
Yes.
We have a second. Just do hand vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, six-zero. Sorry, Gwen, I'll keep you that way.
My nerves are gonna be rattled by this.
Don't get out of line!
I'm closer.
I won't.
I'm afraid he's headed in my direction.
All right. That brings us to some new business. We're ready to hear the application of Granite State Construction Services LLC for a minor subdivision of the existing 6.59 plus or minus acre parcel at 12 Little River Road into two lots. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax map parcel number 62-90, Planning Board Case Number 21-8. And I'd like to ask Kristin if she has anything that she'd like to bring up on this and if this is ready for review.
I do not have any, does Dave usually read through his memo or is that necessary?
He actually does. He actually does do that. He reads it, part of it's him, though, if you know what I mean, like it's his contribution, but he actually, I think he generally does read his memo for us.
Sometimes you kind of paraphrase.
Yeah, a little bit.
Do we do that, oh, can I interrupt for two seconds? Do we do that before we open it?
Yeah, have we opened this one already?
We haven't opened it.
Well, I was asking first if we're ready to.
Ready to.
Yeah, so usually you'll answer and say yes, we're gonna go. Okay, so I'm gonna open the hearing, and I guess we'll ask Kristin to read Dave's memo if she doesn't mind.
Okay.
It also helps the dialogue.
Yeah, sure. So applicant is seeking a minor subdivision of an existing 6.59 acre parcel located at 12 Little River Road to create a 1, to create one additional lot. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District and is identified as Tax map parcel 6290. The applicant submitted a minor site plan and supported documents dated August 5th, 2021, which were enclosed in your packet. They had originally proposed to subdivide the existing house off the church parent parcel and create the required frontage for the new lot on the proposed private right-of-way. However, after staff review, it was determined this proposal required a variance. The applicant appeared before the zoning board at their September 21st, 2021 meeting and presented a variance application for relief from the required minimum lot width and frontage requirements. The variance request was granted. A copy of the decision letter and the minutes were in your packet. Subsequently, the applicant revised plans dated 10/1/21, and they were enclosed for your review along with other supporting documents. We did not hold a TRC meeting, but the plans were sent around to staff, and at the time he wrote this, he had not received any comments on the application. He offers the following comments. Provide parking calculations for the church parcel to show there's adequate parking for the church on the newly created lot. It appears some of the church parking will be located on Lot 90-1. No easement is shown, so he questioned why it's proposed that way. The lot line could be moved, so it's, so all the church parking is located on the church parcel, making it a cleaner situation. A copy of the roadway maintenance agreement should be provided to ensure that there is an agreement in place between the owners on the responsibility to maintain the shared portion of the access drive, and the applicant is not seeking any waivers in association with this application.
And just for the record, Kristin, this was written on October 1st, 2021 by Town Planner Dave Sharple's, and in that, he says there were no staff comments as of the writing of this letter or memo, and I assume there's been none since.
I've not been provided with any.
Okay, thank you. And someone, it looks like someone's at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, and members of the board as well. Christian Smith, Engineer with Beals Associates, representing the applicant on the project, and Sam McCarter of Granite Coast is with us here tonight. And I guess if, I'll just quickly go through the plan for you. I do have a couple of handouts based on Mr. Sharple's comments. I think it'd best if I stand over here to point it out. So, with regard to Dave's first question as to why the lot line ended up where it is, originally, as he mentioned, this was proposed as a private right-of-way. When we were told that that wasn't going to be acceptable, and we actually had to go get a variance for frontage and split the frontage between the two parcels, this was the angle the line came in, and basically what we were trying to do is literally this existing 24-foot paved drive, we were just trying to follow down the center of that to the best that we could, so basically, each resultant parcel will have half of the pavement on their property. So then, this hashed red area, instead of being a private right-of-way, just becomes a common access easement. So that's the long and short of how the property line came to fruition and came to be. And what I did for you as well is I did bring, this is not the document, obviously, necessarily for this particular property, but we do have a joint road maintenance agreement, just kind of a boilerplate that we have seen used on other projects, so I thought I would give that to you. They're very simple, and of course, Sam and the church's attorneys will be ironing out the final details, but just to give you an idea of what those look like. You may have two.
Thank you. Oh, why do I get two?
No, you only have one? Good.
Thank you.
And then in addition to that, we went through and did some parking calculations. The pavement out there is not line striped as it sits, but, you know, I went through and did a little iteration of a possible parking layout, and in fact, we can get the requisite number of stalls in the existing pavement on the resultant church property without having any spill onto the property that will be ultimately owned by Granite State. And the parking calcs are at the top, and you can see where I've put in the stalls with the dimensions, and they've all got 22 feet of gravel aisle around them as are required for the 90-degree parking spaces. There you go, Jen. And so with that, we feel it's a pretty simple proposal. Essentially, you know, they carved the house off of the existing church parcel, that'll get renovated and rented, it's gonna be a rental unit, and the church will remain on their, on their existing lot. Now, you'll notice that what we got for information from the church to generate the parking calculations is that they do have 200 seats, but as far as we are aware at this time, I believe they have 35 or so parishioners. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer or address any questions or comments that the board may have.
All right. Does the board prefer that I see if any members of the public are here to speak on this before we go into it? We usually do that, right? Let's see, anybody has a word or anything? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody here from the public which should speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Okay, anybody want to, anybody want to start? I had a couple of questions, I don't mind leading a bit of the charge. So, Christian, we haven't walked this, it's obviously minor, and I'm somewhat familiar, I've driven on the road before, it's not too far from where I live, so, looking at the plan, it looks like if, where Penn Lane is, I can't see that far anymore, but on my plan, I can see it. Penn Lane, there's a use easement for map 62 Lot 101, which looks like it's on the right side of this kind of corridor into the two parcels you're talking about. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. And if I can find a corner pen, well, perhaps a black sharp could be helpful. Yeah, so there is an existing use easement, and it is bounded, you can, the lines are a little faint from the survey plan.
Yeah.
But it's bounded by this fence, and it is essentially this irregular polygon right there. And it is literally just for this parcel to maintain some lawn and landscaping over there.
Okay.
So that remains on the church parcel. Nothing is proposed to be disturbed or any, or any change to that whatsoever.
And is there a history to that?
I don't know what the history is, Chairman Brown. I think the homeowner probably just negotiated with the church at some point in time, and they granted them the area to maintain a shrub area.
Is it specific just to landscaping and such, or is there any other use they could do?
I think that's it, yeah. I don't think there's any, because that would, that would really encompass, you know, it's all in the 50-foot, excuse me, 15-foot setback anyway, which would be a side setback, so I don't think that there could be anything else contemplated in there.
Well, I'm just thinking access. If they would ever want to have some kind of access through there.
Yeah, I don't believe that's part of that easement, but, you know, in the event that they were interested in something like that, they could certainly, you know, approach the church again. And I think it would have to be expanded a little bit to actually touch the pavement.
Would it?
Yeah.
Okay, that helps clarify that for me, and I guess the explanation you give for why the boundary for the new lot and the subdivision line is where it is makes some sense to me, but I guess you end up with this weird little extra pavement on the new lot that seems to not have much function.
Right.
It's kind of like an orphan.
Without question, and, you know, who knows, at the end of the day, once this transaction takes place, that could easily be removed.
Well, you know the ladies to the front, to my right.
Yeah. I just heard from a gentleman behind me saying, "It's going to be removed."
Have you watched one of our meetings before?
Yeah.
All due respect, ladies, by the way. It's just, you know, if you're not gonna, if they're not gonna use it, yeah, let's get rid of it, so that would be nice to know.
We've demonstrated that they don't need it.
Okay, you have, you absolutely have. So I would suggest that that's something the board discusses further, because to me, we generally like less impervious surface as a board and as a town. We're trying to get our groundwater in better shape, that does help. Every little bit, right?
Every square foot.
That I think was it for me at the beginning of this, anyway. I'd like to hand it over to anybody else who wants to go, I don't really want to put people on the spot, so, anybody want to go?
I just have a follow-up question to your proposal just now, because, so my understanding is for a subdivision regulation, we don't usually have like conditions of approval. I mean, for a lot line adjustment, I'm sorry, like...
This is a sub.
Well, it's a subdivision, yeah.
We have condition.
It's a minor, it's a minor subdivision.
Yeah, we still have approval, that's why they had to do all this engineering.
Okay.
Was that your, was that a question?
That was kind of my question, it's like, so, yeah, I guess it's not a lot line.
It's not a lot line, no, it is a subdivision.
Yep, all right.
And actually, I mean, it's, I don't know if, this is just something to the board more than anything, 'cause a lot of our boards intertwine, right, our land use boards. And this is a situation where I did check in on some of the work these folks did before they got here, because the variance to get the subdivision, basically, without the proper amount of road frontage is a pretty significant variance, I believe. I mean, we don't, we don't see these every day. I, I listen to it, it's not, it's not in our realm, it's not for us to debate, it's a done deal. When it comes to us at this point, it's a done deal. They can do it with the frontage they have. So what we try to do is determine unless, if there's nothing unreasonable here, then just trying to help them tweak the plan more than anything. You know what I mean? So, because the road frontage requirement is often a very limiting factor to the number of lots somebody will yield out of a parcel, regardless of the size of the parcel. And this one was granted, so they went, they did the right thing. They went to the right board first and got what they were looking for, and now they're here to make sure we're comfortable with how things are gonna go over there.
I have, I have a question. And this sort of brings back memories of the project that we did that's further north along the Little River. And I'm just looking at the jurisdictional wetland and wondering, is that, is this, are you, or is this claiming that it's disconnected from Little River? It's a separate, it's a separate body of water? Or is this, I don't, I, I think I see where Little River is.
Which portion are you talking about?
I'm talking about the wetland. And this is more just to make sure that the, that the plan is correct, but the jurisdictional wetland, which is east of the, sort of north and east of the house, oh, north and west of the house, yes.
I believe that it is. I can certainly confirm that with the, with the wetland scientist.
Okay, 'cause we had, Kristen, do you remember that little wet, there was a wetland at eighty Epping Road? And there was a big, kind of, we went back and forth on the status of that and whether it was, I may be misspeaking, whether it was really part of Little River or if it was a separate, 'cause that would affect the juris, that would affect the shoreline protection overlay district, right?
Yeah, in the north part of the parcel, it would bump it out another seventy-five feet.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I would just wanna make sure that this isn't, in fact, really part of the river.
Sure.
Just so we can get the plan right, if it, if it needs to be changed.
Yeah, I can review that with the wetland scientist.
And so they would be seeking, looking to confirm whether there's a discontinuity there? That can be a change in soil, a change in elevation, which it does appear to have.
Yeah, there's a major, it's like a twenty-foot drop from the house down to the, to the water. It's a, it's a pretty significant bank, but just generally, the topography slides down pretty dramatically.
Yep.
Yes, I would, that would be appreciated.
No problem.
Thank you. And the parking, I agree, there's kind of a natural break in the pavement there, so it seems like that might not be a bad, might not be a difficult, you've already indicated that that's gonna happen, but it's-
Yeah, not, not an issue.
There's a noticeable change from the main lot to that little triangular area.
Yeah, it almost seems to be pinching to the west.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I had.
Are we getting ready to speak, Pete? Or are you just clearing your throat?
Can I just get some clarification on the parking part, please? So, I think I might have missed something you said earlier, but I just wanna make sure. You said that they, there was a comment made by the owners that there are currently thirty-five parishioners in the church?
That's right.
So where that juts out, is that, is that gonna lose parking that's there now? Where you div-
There are no painted stalls, so with that small congregation, very likely, nobody's parking way down at the end of that lot to get the church.
Yeah, so where I'm going with this is, what's the capacity of, of the church? Just because there are thirty-five parishioners.
Two hundred seats, that's, that's right on the-
So the capacity is the two hundred?
Yeah.
What would that do to the parking part of this? I mean, is, I'm counting, I don't know, forty-six? Does that sound about right?
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, I was counting the ones that weren't in that boxed-off area. So those ones in the boxed-off area are gonna stay?
They are available. I don't think anybody will ever need to use them unless they, you know-
The capacity's there, just-
Exactly.
So that's, that was my only concern, about the, the number of parking and the capacity and what the, what the breakdown is supposed to be.
Right, and that's, that's the only reason I did that, is I just-
Yes. Yeah, okay. He's got it right on the very top.
Well, I was counting, I wasn't, yes, I see it now, but when he handed it over, you know, we have a couple of other documents to read.
Absolutely, no, it's worth discussing.
Yeah, yes.
It's a very important part of any subdivision.
So in, in shorter answer to your question, Member Belanger, they have the parking capacity for the seating capacity of the church.
Okay.
Available to them.
All right, so those parking spots aren't gonna go away?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, can I follow up on that just a little bit?
Yes.
The capacity, or the congregants now number thirty-five, is that a lower, the lowest number, or is that a kind, has that been the number that it's been for a period of-
I think that's been that way for a period of time.
It's been that way for a period of time, and it's why the-
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's one of the reasons that they're looking to try and sell the house, which they are not using as a rectory or anything like that, is because their, their attendance ship or their congressional size has been reducing over the course of years.
And needless to say, it's income.
Correct.
But the plan in front of us-
Yes.
Handles the parking if it was at full capacity.
That's correct.
So if they have a revitalization-
And all of it, and you fill every seat.
They're still squared away.
Yep, right.
Okay, no, I'm curious.
Yeah. You never know. Any other questions on this?
Who is the, who is the owner to the, of the property to the north? Just curious, do you know? The northernmost boundary? I don't-
Probably in your butter notice.
Yeah, that could also-
That might be.
Should, should be on the recordable plan as well.
I don't see.
I don't think it is.
Okay.
Sure it is.
So it's a hotel, that's apartments, that's the new daycare.
Isn't it that, what, it's, isn't it the condos? The ninety-four units?
Yeah, I don't know who.
What? Isn't it the ninety-four units?
Well, that's what I-
I think it is.
I'm just not su, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I think it is.
Yeah, the Boulders Realty, Unit Two is Integrity Ventures, and Unit Three is Coal Court Pond Associates.
Yeah. Boulders Realty, is that something to do with you?
I don't know what that is.
I remember that one.
Yeah?
Boulders Realty? Oh, not to be confused with the Boulders.
I figured they were selling coffee over there.
Well, it was that, the little lot up the corner.
Yeah.
Which is now finally-
It's gonna be a school.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on this? Do we wanna talk about?
Were you raising your hand there, Kristen?
No, I wasn't, sorry.
Do we wanna talk about the, something to do? This is, Kristen, where you're gonna be really challenged, 'cause Dave usually helps us with these little wordsmithing of our thoughts.
Yeah.
So I would like to have something that the applicant's agreeable to, that talks about eliminating the pavement on the new lot's property that kinda gets, where your parking striped, your definitive, definitive parking on your plan where it ends, and then it goes on to the other property, but it's still paved. Between that and where, are you gonna use that existing driveway to go to the house?
Yes.
So would it make sense to cut that off and kinda eliminate that little, whatever you wanna call it there? It's not really a triangle.
Yeah, and then what we'll, we'll just have to be careful of, Mr. Chairman, is that we maintain the twenty-four feet?
Yep.
So wherever that twenty-four feet meets this property line?
Yeah.
That can certainly-
Could get rid of that?
You bet.
Okay.
And we will be happy to add a note to that, to the plan, to that effect, that, you know, and, and what I'll do is I'll actually draw it in.
Okay.
Demonstrate that we're maintaining the twenty-four-foot paved width on the driveway.
Yeah.
And that the remaining pavement is to be removed.
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
That should cure the problem.
Yeah, the only, and, 'cause it does look like he's using parking right up to that in that corner. Otherwise, we might talk about some kinda landscaping in that area, but I don't think it makes sense. I think just let them eliminate the pavement, they'll probably just plant grass, which I'm, that's cool, you know, and go, as far as I'm concerned. Does that make sense to the rest of the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, in terms of the access easement, it's basically gonna be a, that area that you're talking about, to either side, it's paved now, basically, correct? You're not planning to add more pavement for the entryway?
No, no. Essentially, the, the thought was, nothing would change aside from the house gets rehabbed.
Yeah, right.
You know?
And it's a separate legal property.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. If that's the case, then I think my questions are answered. How about you folks?
Yeah.
I thought it seemed relatively straightforward. I was not aware of this little thing that you mentioned, but it doesn't change my opinion that it's relatively straightforward.
And that's, and that's a pretty minor thing.
Yeah, well, I didn't mean to denigrate it, but, but once given the opportunity, no.
Will be reflected in the minutes. Are we good down here?
I'm good.
All right, Kristen, there's usually a little thing that, that Dave reads for us about approvals. Do you have that little cheat sheet?
I do. So I have a list of suggested conditions of approval.
We still are at the point we read those, even though the gentleman to my right would like to figure out a way to make that quicker.
I've been thinking about that.
I will do my best.
Yeah, he's working on it.
So, condition of approval, number one, a DWG file of the plan shall be provided to the town planner, showing all property lines and monumentation prior to signing the file, final plans. This plan must be in NAD nineteen eighty-three state plane, New Hampshire, PIPs two and eight hundred feet coordinates. Number two, all monumentation shall be set in accordance with section nine point two five of the site plan review and subdivision regulations prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building or unit. And then, do you want to discuss additional conditions for the items that you mentioned tonight?
Yeah, it's usually what we do.
I will do my best.
All right.
The applicant will confirm the status of the wetland to the north of the new lot that, that there is a discontinuity present, or will indicate a revised plan with the updated shoreline district. Does that meet?
Yes.
The applicant will add a note to the plan identifying that they will eliminate the existing pavement section beyond the twenty-four-foot width requirement.
That's right, so that matches the existing twenty-four-foot wide driveway.
Okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, let's see. Were you wanting something regarding the, the use easement for lot map sixty-two lot one oh one is limited to landscaping?
No, no, I just wanted clarification on that. The only other thing that, I guess I'm bringing this up now, but the only other thing that's gone through my mind, and I don't know where you guys would be on this, but in, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, the granting of a variance to allow a subdivision of what I would assume is considered a non-conforming lot already, because of lack of road frontage for the existing lot as it stands today, not subdivided, is a pretty significant variance that we don't grant every day. So the only other condition that I would consider is no further subdivision. But I don't have any real justification for that, other than the fact that, to be frank with you, Christian, if I had sat on that zoning board, I don't think I would have granted the variance. I don't sit on the zoning board, so you're happy about that right now? I'm here.
Yes.
But, you know, that's something that I just, and I don't, the other thought that I had is, is, and this is just me talking to you, wouldn't these folks have had the opportunity to make these condos if they wanted to?
The church?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, at least do.
So, the situation with this is the church is out of money.
Yeah.
So they've carved off this parcel, what they said was they approached me and they said, "We'll give you two acres with the existing house."
Yeah.
And for an agreed-upon price, so we created that line, then we came in, and that's when they said, "Just change and take that twenty-four feet, cut it in half."
This is the process to use.
That we, we've gone through, then we got the variance, right? And so now, here we are. I'm gonna rehab it and rent it, and then see what happens with the church.
Okay.
So I don't want to agree that I'm not gonna subdivide or anything else, because it depreciates my investment and my future potential opportunity to do something with that property to be just a hundred percent transparent.
Yeah.
And so it wouldn't be a good investment for me to agree to something like that, and then the church gets their money. Hopefully, like you said, that, you know, they prosper and there's some more members, but over the years, it's been declining, and I actually had to, on a totally separate note, even help them with their attorney-
Yeah.
-to be able to review everything, so that we could then later on create the agreement for the driveway and everything else, so.
Right.
And it's an aging congregation, and it's just been dwindling down.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's, that's where we are, so that's something that I would not be comfortable with.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to have that dialogue a little bit.
Yeah.
Because even though, again, I'm not about to throw that at you, I wanted to discuss it.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
You know, 'cause it is, it is, it is a non-conforming lot as it sits today, so-
Yeah.
If you look around the town accident, or you look at every non-conforming lot, we start allowing subdivisions without road frontage on every non-conforming lot, we'll be a very busy board. But that's not the case, this is in front of us, and it has been granted.
Yeah, and I think, to, to that end, if anybody were to try and subdivide this in the future, they're gonna have to propose a town road.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I understand.
They would absolutely have to propose a town road, and then all the resulting lots would have conforming frontage.
Yeah, and I think that-
And the cost of a road right now is not-
Oh, it's crazy.
Yeah.
To try what you would get out of that-
Right.
Eight hundred to a thousand dollars per foot?
I think the, the challenge, the challenge here is that probably, this again is my opinion, but probably the empathy for the applicant had influence, I think, on the result. Because I think we've had applicants in front of us that maybe people didn't empathize with as much, maybe they had a butter, a butters fighting them, and then would not have gotten the favorable treatment that this application has frankly received. So that's enough on that, it's all my opinion and my commentary, and I just wanted to throw it out there, but I'm not gonna propose that. Thank you for your candor, I appreciate that. So I'm looking for a motion, there are conditions out there.
Your chair, would you want something regarding the joint road maintenance agreement?
Like, I mean, you've given us a boilerplate, which is fine, you're obviously gonna have one.
One's going to have to be in-
Yeah, you're gonna have to have one, so I would just say, submit it with the, submit it prior to occupancy sounded good?
Excuse me?
Submit it with your request for, we, to Doug, when you're going through occupancy.
Yes, yes, and also, should this get approved, then we could go back and then put the law description to actually create a legal law.
Meets and bounds.
Meets and bounds, and then at that point, that language will also be into the agreement.
Yeah. That sounds good.
So-
Yes, so yes. I don't know how you wanna word that.
A copy of the executed joint road maintenance agreement will be provided to the town planner prior to issuance of this certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
That does it.
Yep, that's perfect, we don't need to see it, they can deal with staff, perfect.
This is, this is purely maintenance-
Purely maintenance. I s- what happens in the winter with plowing? Is that?
That's maintenance.
That is that, but I don't see it spelled out in here, but maybe it's as I'm skimming it, I'm.
I don't know that they discuss it specifically, but. Still plowing it.
Normal maintenance.
You know, salting it, sanding it, whatever they do to keep the ice off of it and keep it a safe travel way. Like any other, you know, drive in town.
Right.
That is all encompassed in the word maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, considering where we live.
I've been very aware of that, not with current neighbors, but previous to them. That was a big issue. That was a huge issue and. Just don't want to see that happen in another location. Okay.
Any other conditions? Okay. Kristen, you're good with your conditions. Is there nothing else? Okay.
All set. I moved at the request of Granite State Construction Services LLC Planning Board Case 12 dash eight. For minor subdivision approval be approved with the following conditions as listed by Christian Murphy.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. All right. Discussion? Yes.
I hate to ask, but. What are the the exact language, Kristen? It is merely, I was listening to what you were saying, but I'm not quite. Sure that I fully understand exactly what that language is. Maybe.
On what?
On the on the extra conditions, the ones we've just been talking.
Readded?
Yes.
Okay, can you reread those, please?
Just just read.
In general?
Read what you have.
Yeah.
Just the extra ones. So the applicant will confirm the contiguous status of the wetland to the north of the house, and should it be determined it is contiguous, modify. The plans to indicate the proper shoreline boundary, shoreline district.
All right. Hold on one second, Kristen, please. You get that? So that's basically just making sure this is an accurate.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Right? We want it to be an accurate plan. It's a great point by Glenn. Thank you.
The the plan will be updated to eliminate the existing pavement section beyond the 24 width foot width driveway.
So. Is that?
Is that?
Is it more than 24 feet at any point? I want to.
Well, it certainly is where that comes out and. You know, starts to flare into.
Into the church.
The end of the church.
That's where we want you to do it. I don't.
That's where it's going.
If it gets to 25 feet further down, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
And my only point was we're going to maintain it to a minimum of 24 feet. So that the driveway is consistent.
Yes. Yeah, so you may, I guess.
And as soon as we bump into the proposed property line, it just gets saw cut straight along.
Yeah, that's what that's the big deal for me is just keep it off the new lot.
Right.
Okay, I think the minutes reflect that condition well enough that we're okay, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. You didn't care about the landscaping. A copy of the executed joint road maintenance agreement will be provided to the town planner prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
A copy of the.
This thing.
Yeah, I know what it is.
Yeah.
But did she say a blank?
I said executed joint road maintenance.
Not a blank, an actual one.
Yeah.
One that the attorney hash out.
Fully by the attorney and recorded.
The legal description.
That's right. So that's not blank anymore.
No, correct. I just brought a boilerplate.
Yeah, this is the boilerplate.
Yeah, the folks that haven't seen one before understand what it looks like.
What I'm concerned about is that we talk about a blank. Or a a maintenance agreement that's blank and.
No, you don't. She didn't say that.
No, I said a copy of the executed joint road maintenance agreement.
Okay, I heard blank in there. I'm sorry.
Will be provided to the town.
They want to leave it blank and sign it.
No, that's right.
I don't think that's.
Good question.
Are you satisfied?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I think we have, that's our discussion. Any further discussion? Okay. It's a minor subdivision. I don't think, I think we can just do yays and nays and abstentions. So. All those in favor? Raise your hand.
We have to say something.
And say.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed.
Thanks very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for your patience with our detail orientated crew. Good luck.
Who we got here is that? Piece of the puzzle.
We are moving. We are moving along.
Yes, sir. New Fields Road, where's that one?
I had to crack the whip a little harder. I'm only get you home by nine.
I know, it'd be great.
Yes.
I get a question.
Yes.
The applicant that asked to go in front of us. Could you make it a condition that he pays for Christian's extra time here?
I like that.
Maybe we take that one under consideration.
Thanks again.
Okay, that's good.
Good night.
I'm sure he has a very small legal and engineering bill in this town, too.
Okay, now we're now we're on to.
All right. So we're going to move along. Next order of business. Looks like we got a new one. You guys ready?
Ready.
The application of. ZV Investments LLC for a multifamily site plan review of the proposed. Conversion of the structures located at 50 New Fields Road into four residential condominium units. The subject property is located in the RU Rural Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 35 dash nine, Planning Board Case Number 21 dash 10. And this is what I'll ask you, Kristen Murphy, is this ready to be reviewed?
Yes, it is.
Wonderful. And I don't think. I don't think we're really just going to turn over the applicant at this point. So we're going to hear from the applicant, I believe.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm a Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. As indicated, this project is to convert an existing house with an existing accessory structure. Into four residential condominium units. The existing house will be a single unit, Unit One, and the accessory building will be divided into three additional units. Each unit is to have two dedicated parking spaces. Unit one will utilize the existing garage for the parking. Units two, three, and four will also have an interior parking spot as well as two exterior parking spots. There are also four guest parking spaces that are being provided. This project is kind of unique from a condominium standpoint because it actually has, there's minimal site work that's required. All the paving, the buildings already exist on site. The only real site work is the installation of a septic system for the expanded use. The project exceeds the area requirements for condos. It has approximately three times the area required for the proposed density. It has 94% open space where 20% is required. The project was granted a special exception by the ZBA under Article 4.2 Schedule One permitted uses of the zoning regs. And per Article 4.2 Schedule One Footnote 1F. Any condo conversion of three or more units must be reviewed by the planning board. And therefore, that's why we're here tonight, seeking planning board site plan approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are you comfortable going over this? I'm going to kick it back to the to Kristen standing in for Dave Sharple. If you want to just summarize his piece on it.
Okay, so Dave went through a bit of the history. The site plan and supporting documents were submitted September 8th, and they were enclosed in your packet. The applicant appeared before, this is just a summary, I'm not reading.
Okay.
The applicant appeared before the ZBA at their August 17th, 2021 meeting. And presented a special exception application requesting the proposed conversion be permitted. This special exception was granted with the following conditions. The condo documents include a provision that at least one unit be owner occupied. And that the planning board during its review of the site plan consider the New Hampshire DOT driveway permit and whether it is adequate for the proposed use. A copy of that decision letter and the minutes were in your packet. No TRC meeting was held on the application, but it was sent to staff. At the time that he wrote this, he did not have any comments from staff. And he offered the following. Comments for the board's consideration. Provide information showing the proposal meets the requirement of section 11.3 of Site Plan and Subregs. No landscaping is shown on the proposed plan. He questioned whether the existing septic system would be utilized for any of the new units, and if so, what the condition of that septic system is. He stated the town is concerned about nitrogen loading into the Squam Scott River watershed. Is there an opportunity to install an advanced septic system to minimize nitrogen loading into the environment? He states that there are no waivers being requested for this application. Since the submitting of this memo, he did receive comments from Jen Maids from Public Works. And so I can step through those as well. There might be, I'll try to eliminate the overlap. She had concerns that the area behind the parking stalls was too narrow, typically a minimum of 22 feet. Is what is required for perpendicular parking. She questioned how trash and recycling would be handled. She wondered if the Phase 1A environmental study was done for the former dry cleaners. She also questioned the existing septic system and whether it would be continued to be used. What the what the state of it was. And she she said there are two previous subsurface approvals from 2004 and 1989. Both of those only received operational approval, and so she wondered if the 1989 system was upgraded in 2004. And if it is from 1989, she had a question about its useful life because it's kind of approaching the end of its useful life. And the there is an existing septic approval from January 2021 for 825 gallon per day septic. For a four bedroom house and one ADU, but if there are three one bedroom units, the total design flow should be 1275, not 825. She also, sorry, there's quite a bit here. She also asked. That you show the piping to the proposed septic leach field. With regard to the water supply, she wondered what the size of the existing water service was. And if if the owners for units two through four will have access to the well controls that appear to be in the primary residence. And she did check with Doug Eastman. He requested that that the HOA docs address that. Has a pump test been done to confer sufficient capacity for the additional units? Has the water quality been tested for to determine if additional treatment is needed? She would like more details on the well. When was it installed? How deep is the casing? It's located within a wetland and may be subject to groundwater intrusion and contamination if not properly constructed. And has an alternate well location been identified? Yeah.
That's why she makes the big bucks. So I guess, why don't we kick it back to?
Yeah, I can address a few of those. As far as the septic system, my understanding is that the existing septic system failed over the winter and they replaced it. That's the that's the. 875 gallon, I believe. So that was prior to the sale, so that wasn't anticipated. But we will be using that. Replace septic system and an additional septic system for our septic. As far as the well, I'd have to, you know, look into that with the with the owner and see what what the issues with that. Same with the Phase 1A. These guys know what they're doing, so I'm sure they completed a Phase 1A on the property.
Okay.
We, I'll look at the parking area again, but we believe that we have parking sufficient area. This area or this, the accessory building has been utilized as a. A church in the past as well as a dry cleaning. And so parking, that's why we have so much parking on site, and it was used as a daycare as well. So it had trips in and out of it daily. That's obviously currently not the case. And one thing regarding. Mr. Sharples' comment letter, I think he misstates on his first bullet point. The provide information showing proposal meets the requirements of section, I think he means 11.4, which is conversions and multi and other multifamily dwellings.
Instead of 11.3?
Instead of 11.3.
Okay.
We we don't show additional landscaping on the plan. There is quite a bit of landscaping. We aren't doing. Site work on the plan, as as we already discussed, except for the installation of our septic system. So. There is significant landscaping to the north, to the south. There isn't a great deal of landscaping, but we are proposing to install a. Fence. So that, you know, it would block any visual impact to the neighbors.
Okay.
Where's the fence? Yeah, where's that?
That's my fault. I forgot to put the label on it. I can show. Along the back line or the south, southern line, we'll install a fence.
While you're up there, would you mind showing us or explaining, there's this dash line. That comes off the back edge of the parking lot, kind of next to the magenta or below the magenta unit. Yeah, there's like a dash line that, yeah, what is that line?
Existing gravel area.
Okay. And that's just to remain?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're going to revegetate it. We're not using that area.
What about, I'm sorry, are we?
I was gonna, if you want, I just assumed open it to the public and bring it right back.
Sure.
Like, I'm going to just open this up to the public if anybody here from the public would like to speak on this matter. Okay, I'm going to bring it back.
Mr. Chair, there was in your packet a comment from.
Yeah, from the public.
From a member of the public. Tim Harrington, the owner of the property at 45 New Fields Road.
Yeah, normally someone will read that.
Do you want me to read?
Sure.
Oh, there it is.
You're doing very well.
Okay, my name is Tim Harrington. Thank you. My name is Tim Harrington. I own the property 45 New Fields Road across. The pro- across from the property located at 50 New Fields Road. Unfortunately, I'm traveling on business during this meeting, but wished for concerns to be read aloud and entered into the public minutes. I have no issues with the proposed condo units located at 50 New Fields Road. However, I do want to ask if there's going to be any more clearing of the property or increased paving asphalt. If so, I have a concern. A few years ago, the property across the street from mine, located at 54 New Fields Road. Was allowed to clear cut a vast amount of wooded acreage. Trees were cut down and the stumps were removed. The land appears to be used for a horse riding paddock. The issues continue to arise when we have rain and the flow of water that used to be absorbed by the trees and brush in their wooded area. Now runs across the property like a parking lot. Flowing heavily across the clear cut into the catch basin and flooding onto my property. This creates a flooding issue and makes my field pool up with water. It takes weeks to dry out. I have the state of New Hampshire out to examine and witness for themselves. Mike Lynch, Karen Dudley, and members of the Southeast Land Trust and Conservation Commission were present. I have a written report from Mike Lynch, which states that the land across the street at 54 New Fields Road has created additional water flowing onto my property. I want to make sure any improvements or design configurations at proposed 50 New Fields Road. Do not put any additional water onto my property.
Couple typos. I think you did well with them.
Thank you, Tim Harrington, 45 New Fields.
Thank you, Kristen. Since the public isn't commenting, Mr. Guyer, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, they they don't anticipate or don't propose to do any additional clearing. The site is is basically. Complete currently, except for the septic system, which we already talked about. So. And the the west portion of the project is wetlands, so that would be an issue with that, or a lot of wetlands.
Yeah. I always think it's helpful as a board if we. I always think it's helpful as a board if we have the opportunity to walk property, regardless of the scope of the project. It seems like some of the minor ones, we don't necessarily get an opportunity to walk. I happen to be familiar with this parcel because it was on the market recently and because of my work, I'm familiar with it. Does everybody know where it is and such? You know, familiar with it?
Mm-hmm. I mean, it was on the site, but
I'd like to see it. I would
Yeah, that's the challenge, right? Because it's hard to, even doing what I do for a living, I find when I go and I walk the property, it's so much different than having just a plan. I have a much better sense of what I'm doing as a board member when I see the property in the field. That's just me. I'm very visual and I think to really do an adequate job with some of these things, it's helpful to do that. And it's hard to do it individually, unfortunately, as board members, you know, you have to kind of coordinate it. Mr. Guyer, is the property occupied now?
I do not believe, but I'd have to confirm.
Yeah, so it would be relatively easy to schedule.
Yeah, I know they've started some renovations, so I don't, I don't believe so, but I'd have to check.
Okay, and I guess one question that I have, and I've had this discussion with Doug Eastman, code enforcement, in the past, and I think that you're dealing with it the right way, but I just, I would like to get your take on it because you're an applicant, representing an applicant here tonight. Going to a four-unit condominium project on this parcel, we have this regulation in this town that talks about one of the units being owner-occupied. How do you enforce that? What happens when the owner doesn't live there anymore?
That is a very good question.
Do we take the unit away?
That is a very good question. Obviously, that was a requirement of the ZBA. So that is, I don't know how you would enforce it. And, you know, that's, I don't know.
It's a really strange regulation that we have in this town. And I know I'm not a good politician, you kind of know where you're standing with me, good or bad.
Right.
And I try to be consistent, but I don't understand that regulation. I don't understand that requirement. And I just want the board to underst, our board to understand how awkward that is for a property owner. So what would happen if an owner lives there and goes through something and they want to rent it or they have to rent it? Or, you know, they pass away, they will it to their kids even, and now their kids own it, but none of them are positioned to live there. Do they lose a unit? What do we do? And we're gonna call Doug out to let him know? I mean, come on. Some of the stuff that we deal with with regulation, from a practical standpoint, should be reasonably enforceable. And I don't, I just don't understand that requirement. It's not your issue, really, other than you represent an applicant being impacted by that.
Right, and it goes further than that because each one of these units could be sold to a different person.
Yeah.
And they could live there, but what if three of them or four of them decide to rent it out or they have a situation?
Right.
It's not as if one person, only one entity can have
Controls everything.
Control of a whole condo.
Right. Yeah, no, it's, I've dealt with it in my business world in the finance aspect, and that's pretty straightforward how that's handled. But in approval and a condition of approval and basically operation, I just find it extremely impractical. And just thought we should, you know, we as a board occasionally try to work with some of the regulations and try to propose improvement, and I just think this is one that could use some work. Because I don't like having an application in front of me that I think has got some unrealistic elements to it, especially when an applicant is going by our rules, you know?
Well, but unfortunately, our rules are what they are.
Yeah, it is what it is.
And I couldn't agree with you more that this seems to be one of those, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. But nonetheless, it is what it is. Now, how are we going to be able to address that in this particular case? I'm puzzled. I'm not sure I know. And that causes me some concern because, well, just because it appears unjust, and yet it is what it is. And at some point in time, there was a group on this board that proposed that ordinance for that particular section. And we don't have, I certainly wasn't on the board then. Glenn, you're the oldest standing here.
Careful.
No, 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 no. I should, senior, senior. How about that better?
Oh, still stings.
All right, I'm in deep trouble. No, no, but I mean, do you recall, I certainly in the past 10 or 11 years, I don't recall that we've tinkered or had this before us in any way, shape, or form to think about what the ordinance is and why its application
I can give you what I understand.
All right, go ahead.
That's helpful. Because I have had discussion about this because I think I've already expressed my opinion on it. So this, I think the genesis of this issue was that there was desire to allow multifamily in different areas of town, such as we now have accessory dwellings. This predates that. Okay, this predates that. So to allow people to convert properties, add on to them, you know, increasing the housing stock without massive development stuff and kind of helping, if you can, for lack of a better way of saying it, the little guy. But the desire was to not have it be utilized by investors, really. It was more to help like, quote-unquote, like I would say, existing property owners make a unit for their offspring or a friend or family or whatever, and have it actually be separate dwelling units. I don't think the intent was really necessary in the current application. But I think it falls into this
I agree.
Because it is the regulation.
Yeah.
I don't think it was meant to be a way to utilize doing a bunch of condominiums or such. I really don't.
I agree.
And yet, you know, it's part of the regulation, so it's allowed. And I just think it's a challenge to throw that, well, one of them has to be owner-occupied on it. I just think that's a real challenge on a practical level. But I do think that's how it generated. That's where it came from. The intent was to really work with existing owners, trying to allow them some more flexibility with their property. You go back, you know, 50 years or so, if you go out to the Portus Navy Shipyard, I mean, everybody in Kittery practically had people renting from them that were related to the military for additional sources of income. And it was fine. And then, of course, zoning comes around and everything else, it's much more difficult. I think it was trying to allow that. Working with the existing housing stock and the, and the quote-unquote, the little guy, you know?
Okay, all right, but that, excuse me, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think that's how it came about. And I think it's like one of these unintended consequences, if you know what I'm saying, that we end up in a position where we end up dealing with an application and a very impractical restriction on the application.
And I don't take issue with the regulation itself. I think, I think this is a fringe issue that may never come up again. And I agree that it's, this is cumbersome and it's, I don't know how we're going to regulate it. The owner certainly came into this, I suspect they were aware of this regulation before they went forward and developed this
Yeah, for me, Glenn, I appreciate what you're completely saying. I just don't like impractical, what I see is impractical
Oh, I don't either.
Unenforceable regulation.
No one on the board does.
Yeah.
You know, it just doesn't make sense.
I appreciate it and understand that, but nonetheless
It's here.
And how are we going to deal?
I guess what we should do is try to put it on our list for stuff that we're working on.
Well, but all right, but that's, that's fine, but right now, today.
I think it is what it is. I think it is what it is.
Unfortunately, none of us think that its application here is beneficial, but nonetheless
Right.
We're, we have to, we have to live with what we've got.
You don't have the right to waive it.
No.
No. So therefore
I guess you could have asked for that.
Well, I'm not even sure because it was a requirement, it was a requirement of the ZBA, so we're stuck with it.
Think you are.
And then to a certain
Are you though? I don't know. Because we've had applicants in here trying to get out of stuff the ZBA required. I can think of one where they don't want to have to build a commercial building on Epping Road, and that was a requirement of the ZBA to grant them the number of units they were granted. And they sat here for months, and they've come back in every direction they can to get that waived. So that's a question, to be honest with you.
That's a lawyer question. I'm not a lawyer.
It is a lawyer question, for sure. Probably above anybody's range tonight. But I guess because it is so impractical, I would be open to that waiver if it was, if it was appropriate. But that's just me. So enough on that issue. I just thought it's worth discussing as a board because we do try to improve as we can, you know?
Well, I don't think anyone is disagreeing with the need to improve. But what are we going to do with this particular application now? And I don't have that answer. I don't know.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't try, but I'm troubled as to, as to exactly what there are going to be some hoops we have to go through.
Yeah, do we think we need a site walk on this?
I think they're always helpful.
Yeah.
I agree. They're very helpful for me personally.
Yeah.
Yep.
It was my feeling when I reviewed the application. Do you have an opinion, Jen?
I would like to go on a site walk, yes. Before, I mean, and we can arrange it and everything, I do have some questions for the applicant that I'd like answered tonight before the site walk.
Yeah, definitely.
So whenever we can get to that.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Well, do we want to schedule a site walk first?
Sure.
Or since we were talking about this?
These are always fun to try to coordinate. So I think we're going to assume that we're going to have a site walk in the next, we have another, I have no idea the agenda on the next meeting. Is there room?
I don't know.
If we push these guys out to that?
I think you should be fine, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So then we try to do that between now and the next meeting, right?
The next meeting, the 28th?
Yeah, yeah. Can you make that? Would you be able to do that? We push you out there? We're not doing that yet, but
Right, yeah, no.
You would be? Okay, so then let's try to schedule our walk. Usually, we seem to do, you guys have got some issues in the mornings, right?
I have issues Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I am free Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, free, free?
Free, free. No school drop-off.
You said Monday and?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. All right, so we got one flexible?
Tuesday's better for me.
Tuesday morning?
Yes, morning.
Like nine?
Yeah, eight.
Eight? Tuesday, ooh.
I know.
I can do it.
I usually open the office for night.
As long as my back isn't hurting. Play hoop Tuesday morning so my back hurts. How about Tuesday at eight, ladies?
Tuesday mornings are good for me, too.
Is that the 26th?
26th, the 19th.
The 19th.
They're both, they're both fine for me.
I would prefer the 19th just to, because
Sorry, I'm gonna try to go as close to the meeting as we can.
Yeah, I prefer the 26th.
Oh, you do?
Well, we've been, yeah, that's just how my mind was working. It doesn't mean that was what your intention was.
Well, for me, the reason, I would say I try to get further out, only the reason is if they're getting feedback from us.
It gives them time.
Gives a little more time.
Absolutely, I agree.
That's all. But, I mean, we're gonna be providing feedback tonight still.
No, no, I actually think that's, it gives them more time.
That's my preference.
Sorry, I was trying not to add anything more to next week.
Oh.
I have the all-day budget meeting that I'm
Does Tuesday 8:00 AM still work for you next week?
I'll make it work.
Gonna suck it up?
Well, I wouldn't quite put it that way. But, yeah, I have all the responsibilities, but yes, I will, I will make the time.
It's just a matter of priorities, Nancy.
Not quite.
So your volunteer work has to take precedent.
The BRC?
I'm kidding.
10:26, 8:00 AM?
No, 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 19.
Oh, 19.
10:19 at 8:00 AM?
I might not be able to make the 19th, but if everyone else can, then I would say two A and I'm
Nancy's squirming over there to get to the 26th. So does a 26th work for you?
The 26th would be better.
26th work for you, Glenn?
I don't think so.
This guy said, right there, 26th work for you, Holly?
26th is good.
26th is good for Nancy, right?
It is, thank you.
And we'll
26th is good for
26th is good for Mr. Plummer and Mr. Gruder.
Right.
Yep.
And what is the location?
It is.
50 New Fields. 50 New Fields?
Yes.
All right. It's got the, does it still have a real estate sign in front of it? It's got a, is it a Baptist church? Is it a Catholic, Catholic? What is the church?
I can't remember what kind of church it was. I don't know if they even have the cross still on the accessory building.
Yeah, I can't, I went by it the other day and I can't remember.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna make the site walk for Tuesday at 8:00 AM, October 26th. Does that work for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
All right. And that gets, that is open to the public, so if anybody's paying attention, they're welcome to come there. If Mr. Harrington is available, it would certainly be nice to see him, a gentleman whose letter was read into the record this evening. All right, and then Jen, you want to go?
Is David's schedule open that day? I know you don't necessarily have it, but he'll just have to make it open.
Yeah, I suspect he can make it.
Yeah, okay.
It's kind of early for Dave.
Yeah, I think he has a, I think he has an issue with early mornings
He does.
Also with
He does.
School drop-off.
If he gets there a few minutes late, we'll be fine.
Yeah, it's not, so we're having, got a great long distance in.
No, it's not. It's not a deep site walk. It's really gonna be probably more looking at the structures, probably where the newer replaced septic is, because that's probably, the septic and well are probably the two, in my mind, the two most relevant site issues that are just kind of not completed at this point. And you may have gotten further by then on that. So it's, did you have more, Jen?
Yeah, so I had a couple of questions. The first being the parking dimensions that Jen Maids pointed out, the parking stalls are only 19 feet, the drive aisle is only 19 and a half feet. Typically, you know, you want more than that.
Yeah, we can look at that. We also, I think I mentioned it, but each of the three units in the accessory building is actually going to have an interior garage. So that's one parking space. They actually each have two additional parking spaces exterior. I can look at potentially angling them to give them a little bit more space, so that I don't think it's a problem. I think we can work around that issue.
Yeah, so actually, so I'm glad you just showed us the elevations because I don't think I got those in my packet. But, yeah, I was wondering what the, what these are actually gonna look like. So that's great.
35 feet, is that?
Yeah, they'll be below the, whatever the requirement is.
Is this, so is this a complete, this isn't a complete teardown, though, right? This is
No, it's a, it's a, they're adding a story.
Okay.
Which is, it's in the same footprint, though.
And then it looks like, so there's some, it says limited common area, unit number four, so each area in the back has like a little
So each area, and it's kind of easier maybe to see in my color-coded, so the solid coat is the unit itself, and then the area outside is the backyard, if you will, so they can have a grill or something of that nature. But then the remainder of it will be common space.
And then is that a fence line? So are those going to be fenced-in areas?
Potentially. Potentially.
It's natural, though. It's not, it's not a built structure. It's a, it's gonna be lawn.
We're not extending the buildings at all.
No, I mean, it's not, by built structure, I mean, it's not a deck.
Oh, not a patio, no.
It's a grass.
Yeah, if they want, you know, it's lawn, they want to have a grill out there, a couple patio chairs, then that's fine.
But there would be, I mean, would there any be, if I had one of these units, I would want a patio. I would want a paved space to put my grill on and my patio chairs on. So I guess the question is, is that gonna turn into a paved space? Is there any exclusion in the HOA documents that it couldn't be a paved space?
They can include, we can include that in the HOA documents.
I mean, frankly, I would be inclined to show the paved space.
Yeah.
Because people are gonna want a paved space there, or a deck or something. I don't know what the grading's like. Probably a patio. And then it's just on the record that that's, that's what's allowed, that's what's there. I mean, there's plenty of, I'm not super concerned about stormwater or anything, but just so that there's a record of the pervious and impervious. Um, what about, um, I see you have a common utility room. I'm just wondering about like, what, what, so you're gonna need like propane tanks, you're gonna need HVAC. What are the utilities and where are they all located?
That's basically the well room.
Okay.
So the well will come in there and be split up. That was one of the questions that Jen had.
So where's all the other stuff go?
Then we have the septic, and then the electrical utilities will be in that as well, or on the exterior of that wall as well.
What about like, is there propane boilers?
I'll have to look into that.
Oil, um, HVAC units, those I don't think are shown here.
I'll look into that as well.
And then I guess, my other question is more to Kristen, and I, I'm sorry, this is kind of an unfair question, but, um, or something maybe, I don't know if the rest of the board is concerned about this, but I feel like the past, several applications that we've had over the past year or two have been, we've gotten them and the TRC has not met and reviewed them. And then, so like tonight, it's like, oh, well, I sent it to everyone and there were no comments. And then tonight, we hear this huge list of comments from the city, from the town engineer. Do you know why the TRC isn't meeting as, are they not meeting as frequently as they used to? And why? And is it just because the applications don't warrant a meeting, or?
My impression is the complexity of the applications aren't high enough to warrant a TRC meeting, but I, I don't know where that threshold lies. It's, it's basically Dave's call.
Okay, yeah, I just, I feel like we, I personally rely pretty heavily on the comments we get from our town staff with regards to these projects, and, because they have the technical expertise that we don't have. And I feel like a lot, like, a lot of times, it's like, oh, there's no comments, and you wonder, is that because there are no comments, or is that because they just haven't gotten a chance to look at it yet, or? So I guess it's just maybe a question for Dave, and I understand, I mean, if it's not, like, maybe there is a level of complexity that warrants a TRC meeting, but I feel like, you know?
Yeah, like the first application.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's like, it's pretty straightforward for our board what would be required. I think usually it gets into more unit subdivision type of stuff. I think the regulation is pretty straightforward, what this application is allowed to do. And because I think they're not expanding footprints, I think that affects the complexity of the application, you know, existing footprints are generally allowed to work with.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think this one maybe walks the fine line, though, because you kind of are expanding the footprint a little when you start looking at, you know, patio space and new septic and utilities, like, all the stuff.
I think the utilities are the big part of this one, in my mind.
Yeah.
And I think Jen reflected that.
All right, um, so those were my primary concerns. I think that just, you know, I would probably want a condition that no vegetation will be removed. I know that that's the intention. I know sometimes when you start construction, you say, oh, no, well, actually, this would be great, let's cut that tree down. And so, just in reflecting our, the butter's concerns, I think that that should be a condition of approval if we get, when we get to that. And that was it for me.
So I, I'm assuming that since we scheduled a site walk, we're probably not voting on this today. So, is there any other concerns that members of the board have on this application that we'd like to express to give the applicant the opportunity to have a, have a more satisfactory application?
I was just wondering, Kristen, could you email us that list that you?
Yeah. Yes, I suspect.
I went through the package just to make sure I didn't miss it, and it's not there, so.
Yes.
Having that list would be helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Nancy, I think that Kristen said that had come in since the application, since his memo, anyway.
Correct.
Yeah, well, I still wanted to check.
We wanted, absolutely.
Right, and I, and the emails today, so, yes, I think it's important. Thanks.
Yeah, definitely. Was there anything else, Nancy, that you thought of?
Not at this point now.
No?
The site walk always.
It helps.
It really does. I'm visual, too.
Yeah.
So.
I know this will be flushed out going forward, but could you just clarify for me the, the situation with the well? You've got, you've got the approximate location of the existing well, which is supplying everything right now. Are you proposing, did you, did you indicate that you're proposing a second well? Or is this, is this in your mind?
We are proposing to utilize the same well, but I have to confirm with the, with the applicant that they tested the well and make sure they have sufficient flow.
So all Jen Mates' questions will be answered going forward.
And then, yeah, and I think her question was, if you're gonna keep the well, is it sufficient capacity? And if not, where is the secondary well gonna go?
Right. Have you even, have you thought about that yet, or is it premature to even be looking for a new site?
Well, I don't think it's premature, but we haven't thought about that yet.
Okay.
Did you have her memo?
We did not.
All right, it sounds like it was probably an email.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that'll help. All right.
And then are you proposing, I don't, sorry if I missed this, too. If I understood correctly, the, the previous septic system failed, and you've put in a new one. Are you proposing yet another septic system as well?
Correct, another septic system will be required.
Okay, all right, but it's not on here yet?
We, yeah, we showed them.
Oh, wait a minute, proposed septic expansion. I see. Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
So, to be clear, the existing septic system that is shown on the plan, which sits behind unit four, that's the one that was put in in January?
January.
Yeah. And this is already, this is pending approval with the state, or?
No, we, we haven't, we haven't designed the additional yet.
Got you, so you got your area figured out.
Correct.
You're just starting that process, okay. And that's, that's, we just want to make sure they have the space, and they're not in the wetlands or something crazy like that. And we might, you know, clearly, there's state regs in terms of the size that it needs to be, Gwen.
Yep.
Which Jen brings up, but that's gonna hit, the state's gonna hit that anyway.
And I like that they, that Dave mentioned the advanced septic system. That's, that would be great, if that's possible.
I'm not sure. That's something that's still coming around, isn't it?
It's fairly new, but.
It is something that's still coming around.
Yeah, because I know.
There's no requirement for it currently.
Right, right, and I think it's probably the future, but I think it's still happening. It's not quite a requirement at this stage.
Good to consider. I don't know what the cost implication is.
I think the cost is higher.
But, that's one of those things that might be worth.
Yeah, if you get more life out of it.
Yep. Has the fire department reviewed this for?
I believe they have, I mean, they received everything.
I'll be sure that Dave checks in with staff and consolidates comments and gets them out.
I'm pretty sure we had comments, or the fire checked in during the ZBA, so I think it would have been back when we were in front of the ZBA.
Anybody else want to provide some feedback this evening?
You'll, you'll put the fence location on, when you revise the plan.
So, Jen, I just, I'm, Barry may be clear, but I'm not clear, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you were talking about with potential patios or decking and stuff. What was, how did, what were you looking for, for feedback on that? Did that end up on the plan, for them to?
I'd like to see, you know, I, I don't think it's practical to say that's gonna be a fenced-in, grassed area that people are never gonna pave, like, so either, I would say, you know, it's probably up to the applicant, either something in the HOA document saying, you know, you may never pave, you must never pave this, or it might be easier just to put in a paved area. Like, I wouldn't have a problem approving it with a paved area, just, you know, put in what you think the max will be, that, that we can approve it.
The challenge they have, I think, I mean, they can manage it, but the challenge, I think, they have because of the type of ownership they're intending, where it's going to be multiple owners. If you start to show it on a plan, you end up, by default, almost having to do it. Because if you're, if these guys, my guess is these guys are gonna do these, they're gonna build them, they're gonna sell them.
Yeah.
And when they put it on the plan, if it shows like a paved patio, for example, if it's on the plan, the new owner's gonna want that. Or if you're gonna want, you're not gonna want to do it four different times, you know what I'm saying? Do you follow what I'm saying?
No, and that's why, I mean, I'm proposing that they, I mean, if I were doing this, I would just buy it. Because, I mean, I would much rather buy a townhouse with a paved patio.
I think outside space is important, yeah.
Yeah, um, but if they don't want to do that, then it becomes something in the HOA, it becomes some kind of.
Future potential or something?
Yeah.
We can, we can limit the size in the HOA, so that they don't have to install it at this time, because I, I don't believe the applicant wants to show those on the plans. But we can limit the size for each unit that is available for hardscaping.
Though, yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah.
I think it's just, yeah, it's like, I, I mean, I feel like if that whole area that's blocked off was hardscaped, that would be a lot. That'd be adding a lot of impervious surface. But conceivably, you could sell that and somebody could go out there and do that. So, so I guess I'm just saying, we, I would like to, you know, establish some limits to what it is, and then, you know, whether it's something the applicant wants to show on the plans, or just limit it via the documents.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if you had something like future potential area with that on the plan.
We can include both of those. We could do it on the plan as a future potential and in the HOA documents.
Yeah, that would be good, because I know, I happen to own a couple condos, and some of that stuff wasn't very well outlined. And when we went back as an association and tried to kind of clean stuff up that wasn't well conceived, we got into that stuff, and it really actually was helpful. Because when you own it, when you end up with different owners, they have different ideas as to what they want to do, and what they like, and what somebody else doesn't like.
Different vision, yeah. Somebody might want a patio, somebody might want a fire pit, you know, so.
It's nice to give them what their rights are. Yeah, it's helpful, and if you have it on the plan, it's a nice document, at least a starting point for the future owners. And they can obviously modify it, but your applicant is in front of us now, trying to do this the right way, spending money on an engineer, you might as well get as much out of that process as you can. So I think that's a great comment, Jen. Anybody else have anything for it?
My only, my only thought, and, um, is that this is within the 75-foot wetland setback, and I'm, I'm, I guess there's part of me that's a little bit uncomfortable about adding pervious surfaces. I don't know if it would be too much to ask that if there is a patio put in that's, that pervious pavers are used, which is more expensive, and I acknowledge that, but I, I just, I'm not entirely comfortable adding more pervious surfaces, particularly when you're looking at unit four, which is in that 75-wetland setback area.
I can explore that with the applicant, for, especially for unit four.
Okay. We just keep chipping away at our.
It pretty much is just unit four, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a, is it just a portion of you?
No, it's most of it.
Oh, it is most, okay, I see the line now.
Of course, the entire existing septic is in there.
Yes, we see that. I'm not thrilled about.
Anything else? We'd be looking for a motion.
A motion's a table.
That's the one. Need to do it.
Second?
I think to a date, sir.
Just did it.
I think you need to do it to a date, though.
Well, we want a date. What was the date?
28th.
Do we know? We don't know for sure, right?
Well, yeah, we do.
Oh, okay.
If we push it to that date, that's what it is.
All right.
We've done it.
Yeah, 10:28 at 7:00 PM?
That sounds good.
Same.
Right here, same place.
Same bat time, same bat channel. Do we have a second, Gwen? Did you say second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Well.
It's pretty fast-tracked, not too bad. You know, I'm looking at a, uh, agenda. We're almost there, so.
Erin?
Yes?
I was here for the Rose Farm conversation.
Oh.
Moved forward.
Yes.
Unfortunately, can?
You can get up. Sure, we'll accommodate you.
So.
Just need to state your name and address.
So Jennifer Legere at 6 Forest Street. I came for the Rose Farm conversation.
Yes.
But that was moved forward in the agenda.
Yes.
So I've been sitting here a long time. Can you tell me what the outcome of that was?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not know, we did, um, the outcome was, let me see if I can.
You should always assume someone from the EAC will be here for a Rose Farm conversation.
Wow.
We granted the loop.
Just dig it out, you know? The.
We granted it.
Yeah, yeah, the applicant requested to be moved forward in our agenda. Ms. Murphy, filling in for Dave Sharple, has reached me as the standing chair for the evening about that. We discussed it, um, and decided that, you know, unless something came up, we would be allowing them to be heard first, which is fairly common when it's a relatively small matter in terms of we don't expect the amount of dialogue you're gonna get on the applicant, the two ones that we just had.
Erin, we've been discussing this for three years. Of course, there's gonna be dialogue about the Rose Farm.
Okay, if you'd like to speak on it, go for it.
It doesn't seem, please finish what your discussion was.
Okay, because you just interrupted me, and I acted appropriately, in my opinion, and I talked to staff about it, and we moved it forward in the agenda, like we often do.
Okay.
And we discussed it. This is a public hearing. I have a fair amount of experience in planning boards, in real estate, and whenever something is on an agenda that I have interest in, I go to the beginning of the meeting. I don't assume that everything's gonna go into order, that it's falling on the agenda, because it does get moved. This happens at all boards. So that happened this evening. We heard it, and we granted the extension for one year for their application until October 26, 2022.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome. So the next thing on our agenda is the master plan discussion. We had a meeting with a committee. It's not just supposed to be, by the way, it's not just supposed to be the master plan oversight committee report. We kind of default to that, but the reason this is on our agenda is because we're, we're trying to adhere to our master plan. And this is sort of our reminder as a board to keep the master plan in mind. So, that's always on the mind of the committee, I think. And we did meet, we discussed some stuff that Dave is thinking about with the downtown areas, with ideas for.
With a map.
With the map, and you're on the, I think you're on the housing committee, and I'm not sure, are you on the committee, too? Yeah, so we talked about stuff that I think you guys are working on.
Nancy runs the thing.
Yeah, all right, so.
That's a, that's.
That's part of the master plan, though, it is.
It is, but we're really not ready to talk about it yet, because Dave introduced it.
Yeah.
And to get some feedback, but the map hasn't been finalized yet. We really haven't even seen, I'm not comfortable trying to, if Dave was here to talk about it, it'd be great. But we're, it's in the beginning planning stages, so.
So really, what we're talking about is just that, trying to address housing needs in the town in a sustainable way, I guess, is the best way to put it, right? in a sustainable way, I guess, is the best way to put it, right?
In a, in specific areas, but it's, it's so premature to talk about it because we have, Dave wants to look at the whole picture before we start picking the area and elaborating on the whys and the whatfor's, you know, so.
Right, okay.
Sorry, I don't know how else to do it.
No, I, it's pretty much.
I don't want to say something that it's, that we're not, we're not there yet.
Right, got you. Does anybody else want to discuss any of the master plan?
Wait a minute now, before we leave the subject, I think, I think the consensus of that meeting was that we wanted to at least use this for exploratory purposes, this map. Now, maybe I didn't understand that correctly, but I thought we went around and I had some reservations initially. But then I came around to agreeing that we at least needed to think about this, not reject it out of hand, but think about it. Now, you were there, am I?
Yeah, I don't.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure that, were you at that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the housing meetings.
These are two, these are two.
Same issue.
I happen to be on both of them and that's sometimes, I end up getting a little confused.
I thought you were talking about the housing meeting.
But for, for our purposes at the master plan oversight committee hearing, we looked at that map and thought that this, we should not, that we should continue to use it and think about it. Not say, oh, well, it's too complicated or whatnot and so forth. But that it, that it was a tool that had been developed and that we should continue, not lose track of it, but continue to think about it. Help me, Erin, if I.
No, I think that the bottom line was trying to leverage existing town infrastructure.
That's correct.
To not have urban sprawl any more than we already have, essentially.
And I think, I think that's fair. Now, very preliminary, but nonetheless.
Yes.
The map is, is a, is a tool that we're, that at least the committee decided we wanted to, to think about some more about it, not project it out of hand.
Right.
But acknowledging the fact that the housing committee was, was needed to think about the map also. Now, I'm now going to put on that other hat. And you're saying, yes, it's too premature, but remembering that we had, we're looking at potential of doing something in January, right?
We, we talked about that possibility, but we also said we didn't want to push it that quickly if it wasn't ready to do so.
That's correct.
Education is our primary goal, is to get feedback. And the map is extremely preliminary. I mean, there's no overlay on that map. It's, it's like a map of, an outline of a map, right?
No, I, well, okay, I.
I just want to make sure.
I think it's more than that.
Okay, well, not that I saw, so, okay.
No, 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 but I mean, we're, the, one of the more important factors was where's water and where's sewer?
Yes.
And that's, that map helps us to get a better feeling for where that, those key, and they're key elements.
They're very key, yes.
For, for what we have in Exeter. Those are elements that we cannot, we have to keep them always in our minds. So again, the map, yes, it needs a lot of refinement, but nonetheless, it's a starting point and in my opinion, a very valuable and valid starting point.
Okay. I don't know if you saw a map more than what I saw.
You're talking about the map that shows the water and sewer.
Oh, Dave's doing a map, right? But what I'm saying is the map I saw was literally an outline in certain areas, so it's not.
It's preliminary.
Very.
Well, what about, yes, okay, but I, once again, I'm saying that this is a, this is a tool for us to use.
That's, yes.
Both this board as well as other concerned entities such as the housing.
Yes, oh, we're very excited about it. I will say that. We're, we're excited about the possibilities.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
I have, I just thought of something. It's not a committee, well, it's.
No, go for it.
It's sort of related to RPC, but I just want to remind the public that the hazmat day is Saturday.
Yeah, good point.
So if you have materials at home that you need to be disposed of properly and safely, get your name in for that. And it's, they've kind of changed the setup a little bit to try to streamline it and make it more efficient, so.
Great, thank, good point, Gwen. Saturday.
Saturday, two days from now.
We used to have one of those up in New London and they were very, very helpful.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
No bond or credit releases. I, I think it's about that time.
I think a motion to adjourn is in order.
Granted. Let's go.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content.